Well, good morning and thank you very much for joining us. I am Iori Folani. Let's look at what's going on in the Senate and very important work. They always do important work. You know, actually, whether we like it or not, Senator Natasha Apotu-Raya is in the Senate as well. And there have been issues, but I don't know that we might have the time to touch there today. Because as I said, you know, they really have their plate full. And they'll be looking into the, actually, they're beginning the hearing, the public hearing, on tax reform bill. And the person who can tell me a lot about that, he works very, very closely with the Senate president. I'm talking here about Sir Ken Okolubu, consultant, communication and strategy office of the Senate president. Ken, it's great to have you.
Thank you for having me and Happy New Year. And what a beautiful studio. I feel like I'm in the United States of America.
Wow.
Maybe CNN or Fox News.
Thank you very much, Ken. You know, it hasn't been that long.
It's been that long. The last time I came, in fact, the last, I came once for politics today and I met the lady for the first time. She's been interviewing me for two years. Then the last time I was on This Morning, okay, it was virtual.
Oh, it was virtual.
I was in Abuja. I was very short.
Yes.
It was about Papa Clark, the memories of our daddy, Papa Clark. Thank you for giving us that time. We appreciate it so much because, you know, daddy was like our biological father.
That is right.
Yes, that's true.
Well, you know, may he so rest in peace.
Amen.
So we spoke about that. Then we were with you yesterday or what was that day? We were with you and then you had to quickly go off.
That was Papa Clark's day.
It was?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I had to quickly go off, yes. My apologies because I had some meetings to attend.
No problem. So, well, Ken, you've gotten used to the lie of the ground in the Senate.
Yes.
And now that you're fully here, well, that is to say, when I say here.
On the other side. I know where you're coming from.
No, I'm not even sure I know where you put me. But the bill, you know, that are going to, that we're hearing a public, maybe people need to know where we are in the timeline. It's an executive bill sent by the president to the National Assembly.
Yes.
And so it will end up ultimately, what I want to know, you know, with it being sent back to the president for his signature.
Oh, certainly.
But there's a, just for the sake of, you know, everybody out there.
Just take them through. Okay, it's an executive bill that was sent by the president. And you know, that bill, it's for, actually, we have the tax administration bill.
For, yeah.
We have the tax bill, we'll have the joint revenue establishment bill, and we have the revenue establishment bill. You see, what that bill aims to achieve is to, first of all, find a level playing field for those who have not been paying taxes. You know, compliance has been a problem in terms of paying tax. People find it very difficult to pay tax. My principal said 30% yesterday, but I think it's my, not even 30% of Nigerians that pay tax. But I really put this as 30%. Now, some will not pay because they say there are no infrastructure, there are no basic, you know, services. And they forget that the only way you can, okay, let me use Wike for example. Why is Abuja turning around? Wike gets only 1% of the federal government revenue. The only thing, the only difference between Wike and the former minister is that Wike has gone on a revenue drive. And it's that extra revenue Wike is now getting. People are now running to pay their CO4, their ground rents, and all those, those are the IGR that Wike is using to perform what the magic they say he's performing in Abuja, which we can actually all see. Now, what am I saying here? If you look at the tax bill closely, what the president is proposing is a situation whereby those who are earning 1 million and less than 1 million, that's those who are on minimum wage, would not be paying tax. The president is proposing that those who are earning 50 million in terms of turnover, that's, we're looking at small and medium enterprises, would not be paying tax. Now, if you look at those category of people, those are the category of people that basically, you know, bring that goods and services to the consumer, to the retailer. And so by the time you exempt these people from paying tax, you are now looking at those who are paying the higher taxes, who are earning more. Company income tax reducing it to 25%, who have more people compliant, from 30% to 25%. More people are going to be compliant and more people are going to look forward to paying this tax. And that will mean more funds to the government. Now, the greatest controversy was the issue of value-added tax, where the governors were of the opinion that 50, 60% derivation was too much, and the northern governors kicked against it. And it now looked like it was a northern-southern dichotomy. But the truth about it was that what the Tax Reform Committee was proposing was that, for example, if I make my phone call in Oshobo, or if I make my phone call in Zara, and it terminates there, that is where the consumption has taken place. I can't come and be paying for GlobalCom or for MTN, taking the money here in Lagos. And so they thought Lagos and Rivers was being unfairly given that undue advantage, but that was not the truth. They were trying to find a balance. But in the wisdom of the governor's forum, they have clearly said that, look, 30% is okay by them in terms of derivation, 20% for population, and 50% for equity. And the governors hold the mandate of the people. So if the governor's forum have come to say that, and the Tax Reform Committee have also looked at it, the National Assembly will now have to consider that at the public hearing, because today is the last day of the public hearing.
Okay.
Now, all these are the imputes, the imputes from the charter accountants, the charter, the tax managers, the various professional bodies, TUC, NLC, and the people's representative, and even the NGOs. Everybody is affected by this tax. Now, these imputes.
Are people showing up? Because we've had occasions in the past.
Oh, yeah, it's a full house.
Okay, we've had occasions in the past where people are demanding when.
They showed yesterday's opening, because, you see, our tax laws are obsolete. Some are, in the colonial days, you can't believe it. So it is obsolete laws that the president, you know, wishes to do away with. I think the greatest, greatest contribution to the economy the president would have had in this is a renewed of agenda, even though I'm not his spokesperson, I speak for the, I mean, for the Senate president, is this tax reform bill. Because he has definitely seen that there was a lakuna in 2024 budget. They couldn't meet up with some of the budget implementation, even though some of it had to come with the problems with the accountant general and the payment system in terms of capital implementation. But if we are hoping to get inflation to 15%, which the president says he has to get inflation to, he must be able to attack, go into production and not only consumption. Now, don't forget that in the budget, we have 13, about 13 trillion for recurrent, and we have 14 trillion for debt servicing, and about 23 trillion, 23.9 trillion for capital budget. Now, how do you face this capital budget if there is a shortfall, for example, in crude? Crude that you have said is $75, now, of course, crude is raging around $75. Because you know what we have is Bonny Light, is Brent crude that is $75, which is same as Bonny Light. What if there's a shortfall in the price of crude? Now, you're looking at the budget, the budget is predicated on 2,600 barrels a day. We are not producing 2,600 barrels a day. So it is the wisdom of the president to say, this tax, the money we are going to get, which really says can come as much as 43 trillion in a year, if you look at it in details. But we can't go into all those details. It will take us a very long process, but those are the things that people are going to have the benefit of getting in that hearing. If we get 43 trillion in a year in tax, outside oil, add it to 54 trillion, isn't that almost 100 trillion?
That's plenty.
Then we are not going to be borrowing again. Remember that the president came from a situation where he was using almost 96% to 97% to survey debts. We were printing currency. We're just going on ways and means, printing our currency to meet up with economic shortfalls, to meet up with paying of salaries, which was almost going to get us into the Venezuela situation, Uncle Yori. I'm telling you, people would not know this, but it was a situation he actually met. And so if you look at where he's coming from and where he is now, the tax reform bill would get us beyond that. Are you not shocked that we are almost stabilizing the Naira at 1,500? It's not happened in a long time for us to have had almost eight weeks of having the Naira hover between 1,005, which is what the project is predicated on. And so how do you maintain that? You can only maintain that where you are getting more funds, where your exports are more than your imports, and your GDP level is increasing. And these are all the things, these are all the parameters I think this tax bill is going to meet. It's an executive bill, I shouldn't be defending it. The president's spokesman should be defending it. But because we believe, my boss believes they need it a lot, and he has seen the advantages. That is why he wants to ensure that that bill scales the third reading and is passed into law for the president's assent.
You know, I wonder, nobody really, no, I mean, there were initial hiccups, but nobody really has anything against the reform of tax bills. As you said, they are cake. God knows when last we took a look.
Some are up to the colonial days, we don't know it. It's not in consonance with the reality of the moment, the exigencies of the moment, it's not at all. And you see, a country that does not pay tax cannot move forward. Why is that we find things working when we travel abroad? It's basically tax.
Well, you know, that's another side road that we might not have the time to go down because you said inter earlier that people don't pay tax, maybe only 30% of people actually do pay.
And the ones that don't even pay also have, some of them have a genuine reason. They see that they cannot see what the tax is being for.
So that is where I was going.
I know where you're going for, so we must show them that this is where your money is going to. You see, one of the things the Senate president is bothered about is, I've spoken to him very extensively on this issue of tax. The issue of oversight, the checks and balances from the monies that are going to be realized, so that those monies will be judiciously used and not, you know, filtered away because of corrupt practices. Because if you realize these funds and you allow corrupt practices to allow them filter away, then the whole idea is, it's actually also defeated. And what the president is envisaging is a situation whereby, maybe in 2020, the president can come back and tell you that, look, I didn't borrow a cobo. Remember that his initial budget was 49.7 trillion. Then he went up to 54.5 trillion even before it was passed into law because he saw an extra income from IRS and others, especially the customs, that came to over 4 trillion. That wasn't borrowed money.
And?
That wasn't borrowed money, it was very significant.
And it was also very.
And they were able to now spread it.
And he was also very transparent of executive.
He was very transparent. And again, that money was now put into, why is he able to do the Calabar Coastal Road? It's because he's having freed-up funds. If not, why would he embark on such an ambitious project? So people should also look at that. Of course, I know Nigerians are complaining, Nigerians are groaning. They can't feel it in their pocket. They'll say, oh, this English Ken is speaking, does not make any sense to us because they are looking at the prices of goods. But ultimately, we can see light at the end of the tunnel with this program.
Even though you would appear to be defending the bills under discussion, I was saying earlier that, and you pointed out that that's not really your job. The president has his men for that, but that we're talking about it here. I was going to say that very few people really have anything against the whole process of reforming our whole tax system. It's just that at the beginning, there were misunderstandings.
Oh, yes, there's a lot of misconception.
That have been cleared up, I believe, largely now. So it should be plain sailing. But seeing as you actually are observing on a day-to-day basis, what are the, are there any areas you've noticed that keep on, that keep coming up? Since the public hearing by definition is about, come and talk your own.
There are VATs, people are against VAT, against the increment in VAT. They want you to remit away. Because ultimately, they believe that any increase in VAT is going to, is going to come on the economy and invariably to burn by the consumers. But you notice in that tax bill, we have 5% excise duties for gaming, for gaming. And you know, gaming and, and it's not something that you are obliged, you are obliged to do. You're not obliged, you're not obliged to go gamble, you're not obliged to go, yes. So if we have a 5% excise duty, it becomes an extra income, and if it is enforced. But 5% on telecommunications that is there, people will kick against it because some will say, okay, if you print 5% on telecommunications, ultimately, you know, it will affect our data, what we pay for data, it will affect what we pay for our phone calls, ultimately, it will be burned by us.
Talking of data, the government, as you know, has allowed that sector to go and increase their tariffs.
No, but those tariffs increment were not something that was not going to happen because looking at the exigencies of the moment and the price differential that they have had for a long while between the dollar and the Naira, it would have been very difficult for them to continue business. Remember that most of this, most of this will buy diesel to keep their mass running. And that is why we're saying, one of the things that President Tinubu must do was he must attack the electricity sector. If he doesn't do anything about the electricity sector, it will be very difficult for Tinubu's government to, you know, have that ultimate goal of giving Nigerians that desired economy he wants to have. We have not done well in the electricity sector, we must also call a speed.
Okay.
Yes.
If you see it like that, what would you then say to a lot of people who are saying, even though while they were groaning or complaining about an increase in the tariffs, they cannot say that the supply is not different, it's different.
This band A thing is what we don't, people don't seem to understand because you pay band A, you don't get band A. You go on band B, you go on band C, it's epileptic. And there's been no clear cut. I'm sure the president is not happy with what is happening in the power sector. There should be a holistic approach on the power sector. TCN needs to go into, go back to the drawing board. But there's a proposal before the National Assembly, I shouldn't speak about it now, but there's a proposal that I know that is going to come on board very soon. If that proposal is done, TCN will be able to, you know, because one thing is for you to generate the electricity. If you don't have what you're generating, what do the discos distribute? And the discos have also not shown that they are capable of sustaining what the TCN even brings sometimes to the people, to the consumers. And if you don't have electricity, electric cannot move on because you're spending so much on diesel, you're spending so much on fuel. I mean, you know, I better pass my label these days, take as much as 10,000 liter, 10,000 Naira, which is just 10 liters. So how much am I earning if I'm on a 70,000 Naira salary a month? And I have to buy 10,000 Naira for, which may not carry me for two days, to be able to charge my phone and just power my phone? We must also call a speed, a speed. So that is one sector I know definitely would also affect that principle we are talking about in terms of tariffs, which is what has brought that, that increase in that, in that sector. But in all, in all, in all.
I beg your pardon, there's a viewer on the line. Mr. Bamishé, good morning.
Yeah, good morning, Uncle Yori.
Good morning, sir, thank you for calling in.
Yeah, from Ikorodu. Well, just want to share one or two comments.
Sure.
Regarding the issue of the public hearing.
Okay.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, please go ahead.
Yeah, I am so delighted that at last, the level of understanding, there's a serious improvement in the level of understanding. And what I feel is important is, the government should look beyond collection of tax, but transparent in that implementation that would also benefit the citizens is very, very important. And as we had the major issues, yes, there's more, more resources to push onto projects. But how do we also at least ensure that basic rules are in place? Like electricity that your gas top of, is very important. It should not be a free shield for the operators in that sector. Because if you imagine how much they bought this sector, and they need not have enough resources to invest in spite of all the assistance from the federal government and criminals here and there. And the issue of a band A or no band A, I think that we need to discourage that idea of band A or whatever. Because that will be the ultimate area they are trying to push everybody to. And considering the economic situation of Nigerians now, it's going to, any further push is going to be a serious burden. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bamishé, for coming in. You know, you heard him.
He agrees with me.
He does, he does.
That's absolute truth because, you see, one of the things, one of the biggest hindrance we have had in implementing.
Because it mustn't be, sorry, it mustn't be business as usual.
Yeah, in Bolatimbu's administration has been the issue of power. There might not have been a need to even increase the tariffs in electricity if we have steady power. Do you understand what I'm trying to point out? Steady power, because when you have, when you don't have steady power, but you have, you have a fuel, and you know, the reality of it was that fuel had to increase because we're living on borrowed, on borrowed time. When it was 200 Naira liter, it was not the reality of what this situation was. So by the time you are buying fuel within 960, 1,000 Naira, you should be able to have power so that you don't find yourself buying fuel to power your generators, you don't have yourself buying diesel to power your generators. So a lot of these things still on the income of the average consumer. But now, there are certain policies that you are going to be able to enjoy in the tax reform bill. 4% of development levy on companies are going to go to the student loan. And this student loan has shown that it has been helping those who have not been able to meet up with their payments of their school fees and basic needs, which the student loan is helping. And I don't forget that the seed capital of student loan even came from the EFCC. You understand, approved by the National Assembly. So that money that you need to seek in terms of student loan, you will not have to seek that if that 4% is rigorously implemented in those companies and they pay, and they are able to apply it. So these are some of the details of the tax reform bill that people do not know. And these are the advantages because you know, you can't, there are certain sectors that you just can't fund because the funds are not there. You desire to put more money into it. I was saying something on your sister station this morning that I looked at what was in defense. It sounded like a whole lot about 5 trillion. But if you ask me my own opinion, 5 trillion is a far cry from what they actually need in terms of the security situation we are going through right now as a country to stabilize it. Because if there is not peace, there can't be any development.
Of course.
You require peace.
One second, please, let me just bring in Mr. Oseni, who has called in from, where is Mr. Oseni calling in from?
Mr. Oseni is calling from Joss, good morning, Uncle Yori.
From Joss, good morning, sir, thank you for calling in.
Yes, Uncle Yori, yes, we thank God that God has bring this administration on board. We know the problem that this country is. You know, even before, even before the colonial masters, we know that our parents then, they used to pay tax, they used people here in the north that we call the Endoka. And that particular tax law, we are very, very, very rigid that people have to pay. They follow you house to house, you pay. And one unique thing with that thing and one interesting thing is that those taxes that we are collecting, we see, we used to see how we are used viciously. And people, if you can look at the number of people in the community, in a particular community then, or a town, you see that there's appreciable and a very reasonable numbers of responders as in regard to tax. But why is it now that we are having this problem? Let me tell you, you're, you're, the person standing there, sorry, the member from the House of Gapes or National Assembly there, the main issue is that our laws is not collecting the tax. What for me, what I expected is that, do we have a judiciary that can discipline, that can handle, can handle all this particular issue of corruption that we are experiencing? If we don't have that lotion for the issue of tax, people will contribute the tax. Look at subnational, how much is being given to them? Go to lots of these states and see taxpayers' money, where is it, Uncle Yori? How can people be encouraged to pay those taxes? Most especially, you go to look, go to various local government today, to look at what is happening there. But at the end of the day, you see that we have shared 1.3 trillion Naira down to local government. When you go in there, you see nothing. A covert, a covert to link a community of just 5 million Naira, they cannot even construct it. So what are we talking about here? So we must have a law, we must, National Assembly, your oversight function, for me, is not even interested at having a law, a law that punishes people immediately. Look at governors, it is something billion, one person is taking it, and yet, nothing is happening. Karikacho here and there, let us, it will go away, it's taxpayers' money. So what I'm saying is that we should have a law that punishes people immediately. If not, this money you will get it. It will only take a ball, a president maybe that is as strong as a Swajew to be able to achieve something. But when you look at them, after him, somebody will come, you hear the same story, we are printing money there and there, some policies of, you know.
All right.
If we have laws, laws, this laws can even checkmate without even you going for oversight function. Push for the law, push every arm of the government to do the right thing, that's all.
Thank you very much for calling in, really appreciate your call.
No, I think, I like what he's saying. If you listen to what the Senate president said yesterday, he said, look, we're going to double our oversight functions because a lot of corruption goes on in tax. Some tax officials, we must face realities, cut corners with people in terms of agreeing with them in paying tax. For example, why do, why do they want to join revenue board? They want to join revenue board so that that lakuna that has, that has happened in terms of multiplicity of tax will be eliminated, the vulnerabilities will be protected. For example, you go to a restaurant, you pay your VAT, many times I pay VAT, I see how huge the VAT is, do you understand? And I asked myself, someone tell me that they have two books. They have the book that they give to the consumer, and they have the book that they keep for themselves. That is cheating the federal government and cheating the state governments, or what should have been their income. So if corruption is checked from the level of those who collect this tax and those who are supposed to be enforcing this task, and the oversight functions which the National Assembly has committed into checking, then these likages would have been nipped in board because the likages are a whole lot from the people collecting the tax, to those who are enforcing the task, to in the implementation of the revenue that has been collected. So that joint revenue board, I believe, would eliminate this, these whole likages that have been in the system. That is why then the old bootsmen, that would always say to those who are, who have, who have had one tax issue or the other, and it can be transparently shown, because some people will pay tax here, they will pay company tax, they will pay ground rent tax, they will pay radio tax, they will pay another tax from their place of work. So you know, a lot of taxes that you can put together, and some of those taxes, he's very correct. Either these funds are actually, either misappropriated, or there is a leakage from the tax collection agency. So if this, what the tax bill seems, you know, aim to also achieve is to avoid this multiplicity of tax, these likages that are, that go on. And so there will be a centralized system where we can know that this is where the tax is, and we can enforce
Okay, okay, okay.
the check and balances.
You know, before we continue, I think we have a report, you know, on this subject matter. I was, you know, it was being played to me before we came on the program. Let's take that report and then come back to conversation. Now, I don't know if you knew what was happening there, I didn't. But that's, there's a technical thing going on in here, so.
It actually happens?
Yeah, I think that's part of a live program.
Program, okay, that's supposed to be going to.
That's supposed to be going on. But I was expecting to hear a report on the subject matter that we are discussing. So I don't know, you know, what happened in there. But I don't know, okay, so we'll take a break. So let's take a break, stay with us, please, so I can sort this whole situation out.
There is always more to a story than the scrimmated line. The part of a story that is not told casts a shadow. It's like the part of an object that is not reached by light. On TV News, I'm able to explore the many angles that are at a story, talking to stakeholders, asking the difficult questions, and digging for facts. I believe the viewers are able to make a better decision if they're well informed and understand not just a part, but the complete story. TV News, fest with breaking news.
Good morning, Marina, Stetson, and all the passengers.
Efficient, it's comfortable.
This development will go a long way in reducing congestion and emission.
The trains are a long-term solution to Lagos' traffic challenges. This is where we take the final, you know, decisions on policies, programs of government. I will have to ensure that, you know, the narration of Lagos as a PLC is taken very, very seriously.
This is the major pedestrian bridge linking Oyigbo here to Apapa Road over there.
With this overpass, we are providing what we call permanent solutions.
This place is one of the most dangerous areas at the biosecurity environment.
This can go into the means and every terms of your neighbourhood.
Our goal is to remain as Africa's model mega city, to move our GDP from the five, six position to the third position. And we believe is achievable with all the commitments we have.
Explore the city of Lagos, where dreams are made and possibilities are endless.
I'm at the Duaja Salama Dini, I live in Lagos, inside Lagos.
Meet Binge or Rashug, a fearless voice and an advocate for the truth. He's bringing fresh energy and bold insights to journalists hang out.
Get ready for deeper analysis and dynamic perspectives. Join me and Baba Jide Kola Diwiti Togu with other veteran journalists on Journalist Hangout. Weekdays from 5pm and on Sundays, 1:30pm.
Information is power, information is security, information is knowledge. On Label Lens, we believe that working people around the world have real questions on their own. They want to know how the world of work operates, what it means to employ out label, how policies affect workers in the workplace. On Label Lens, I ensure we engage effectively the organized label, organized private sector and governments to get out of them. Information workers are in need of. I am Sharley Jackson, asking questions that make sense of the workplace.
Every second, every minute, every hour and every day, time doesn't just tick away. It accounts down to political decisions that shape our world.
This country must move ahead.
Imagine the impact these decisions have on our lives, some are consequential, others may leave us intrigued or battered.
You have no better friend and partner than a year.
Step in and feel the frenzy like never before. Join me every weekday for an hour of fact finding interviews, but questions caught the call. How did you say your administration has failed in these sectors? I will dig in to get to the heart of issues from local politics to global insight. Join me as I am at the Power Place, jaw dropping revelations and your filtered truth. This isn't just politics, it's unraveling the stories that matter. Raise yourself for Politics Tonight, every weekday at 8pm, where every decision echoes along the corridors of our lives. Politics Tonight, only on TV News.
You're watching Beyond Hundred Days with Nifemi Ugunthoye.
President Tinubu sent his in office.
There on our way to progress.
Six out of the eight APC federal lawmakers.
I have a movement structure that is going to take back our party in Anyuwo State. Because this one I'm seeing is held by moonlight, it's not working.
So I'm wondering what you think or who you think can stop him now?
He doesn't own the party.
One of the causes of inflation is because people cannot go to the farm.
The government still needs to do more so that people can eat.
I believe what clamouring for is more responsible use of social media, not that people just go in there and think that they can say anything to anybody.
Tinubu is not one who believes in the simple, I mean, he wants to get it done, he will face it, he will get it done.
Yes, the president from inception of his administration focused squarely on diversifying the economy and driving in investments to, you know, cushion the effect of everything that we've seen, ranging from COVID-19 to the global commodity shocks, global financial crisis and all of that.
I was privileged to have worked under a governor who believed in the system, who also built up the system and I'm going to do same.
Alright, that's our show today everyone, thanks for being a part of it. TV News, first with breaking news. Every major news story is with many perspectives and layered with different levels of impact. Honey, what time is it? First with breaking news. Sometimes it's the story that calls. At other times, the people just want to be heard. Their voices were echoing through time itself.
If the tide is high, everybody run for safety.
Their tears leave a sweet sour taste for all. Their demands, a familiar call beckoning for change. In our world, no one expects a disaster to happen. But when it does, we'll be there to expose all signs from the east to the west, north and south. Committee Forum will examine the audities and challenges to economic development as well as issues.
Okay, I do believe we're back, so welcome. But as I was saying, I was calling for a report, I think we can just about get that report now.
Legislative work on Nigeria's tax reform bills has intensified with a two day public hearing at the National Assembly, drawing key decision makers, policy drivers, government officials and concerned citizens. The hearing aims to gather diverse perspectives on the proposed reforms, which have sparked widespread debate over their potential economic impact. The president of the senate has called on stakeholders to thoroughly familiarise themselves with the details of the proposed tax reform bills before making contributions at the ongoing public hearing. Declaring the session open, he cautioned against being swayed by social media narratives and emphasized the need for informed discussions.
Don't jump up to contribute based on social media discussions, go and read first. What will be made again tomorrow, we'll come and make a judgment, we should not just go online. You can download, go through if the area you don't want, please tell us.
Lawmakers insist the exercise is crucial as the tax reform will play a significant role in shaping Nigeria's economic future.
These bills aim to simplify tax compliance, improve revenue collection and eliminate inefficiencies in our tax administration, ensuring that tax system is aligned with the overall best practice.
They are showing by God's grace, we will give something back to the Nigerian people through Mr. President who has sent to whatever pieces we passed, something that will work well.
Some contributors urge legislators to concede that the recommendations put forward by the governor's forum, particularly regarding the value added tax sharing formula. They emphasize the need for a fair and balanced distribution framework that aligns with Nigeria's economic realities and fiscal federalism.
We must modernize our tax laws, enhance compliance, broaden the tax base and create an environment that fosters investment and job creation.
We're the happiest people seeing this tax law coming in place, bringing every legislation in one basket.
The leadership of the National Assembly says it is not in a hurry to pass the tax reform bills as it will consider each clause diligently and ensure the bills capture the broader views of Nigerians. See, just so I do it, it was news Abuja.
Well, so this is what you've been saying from.
This is exactly, I'm happy you just, you know, your wisdom and your experience over the years, you knew that report was going to help me out. Do you understand? You know, it's just like what the president said, a nation that fails to adopt its revenue framework is at the risk of stagnation and economic decline. You heard what the minister said, for there to be investment, for there to be growth and you can see how serious, you can see how full the hall is. You saw the leader of the senate. It's, it's something people don't seem to understand, but we must commend President Bolamet Tinubu for this tax reform bill. People might not understand, but by the time this tax reform bill goes into place, they will see the wisdom of what his government was doing because you see, the president said, don't pity me. He said that clearly because he saw the situation he had found himself. And at that point in time, he must have been, he must have been at the crossroads.
He was talking in terms of, I asked for this job, so it doesn't have to be pretty.
He saw how, he saw the very critical situation and the delicate economic situation he had come into. I think the worst is over, I'm not too sure, but I think, I think the worst is over and we're looking forward to. But you see, we can only move forward when we have added income. Recently, the president had to borrow 2.2 billion dollars, it was oversubscribed because of the belief in the fact that Nigeria economy is taking shape. It was oversubscribed to close to nine billion dollars, the treasury bills that were sold. And I think we must move from that system of where we keep borrowing to invest in infrastructure. We were even borrowing to give handouts, remember, 800 billion dollars was 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 being sought before this president came in for there to be handouts. Of course, when you put money in the pockets of the people, you are reflecting the economy. But when you are coming from a place where GDP was at a negative and it was at a negative three times and went into recession in the, in the, in the past administration, until I've come to a place now where GDP, we are hoping to, it's over between 3.8 and we're having, and we're having a trade surplus where supply is now, export is more than import. You can only sustain it when you, when you drive production and consumption is de-emphasized. Your current expenditures is de-emphasized and that is the stark reality of the situation. So without having a healthy tax system in place, you cannot drive extra income.
That's right.
Those extra incomes cannot fall from heaven and that's the reality of the situation.
Excuse me, and as I was saying at the very top, it's, it's, it's about people understanding and I, I believe there are more people that are, so to speak, on board now than when the first announcement was made, following enlightenment. And the senate president was cautioning there that, look, people should just listen to informed, you know.
Informed, informed commentaries and analysis and you don't also blame people in the, in this area of social media. Whatever you bring on, anybody can post and anybody, situations can, you know, can be misinterpreted. But that informed analysis is very key because when you listen to informed analysis, you're able to sift the wheat from the shaft in terms of this tax bill. And when you sift the wheat from the shaft, you will see the areas that this tax bill is going to benefit Nigerians. You can imagine by the time you start moving, you're not seeing any potholes, you're, you're, you're having steady electricity, you're having your, the schools that your children go to, you have books, your healthcare, you're able to, you know.
All the things that they are supposed to be able to do, but couldn't do.
Because now they are free of funds to do these things.
Okay, Mazi Okorafo, good morning to you sir and thank you for holding on, go ahead now.
Good morning, Sir Yori, good morning, I guess. When we talk about this tax, yeah, this tax reform, I don't know what to say, the public hearing we are so now, who are acceptable coming to, to make their own contribution, that would be acceptable by the National Assembly. You see, I could have robbed the National Assembly, it has hurt us, the listeners, to send that the word, debate, debate or the discussion down to the grassroots level. Not everybody will go to headquarters, not everybody will go to Abuja to discuss all these things. But the question is this, the result have shown that in Nigeria, it's not, 10% of Nigerians are to pay tax. The remaining 90% don't pay tax. At least in Aba, early in the morning, you see that everyone, they will come to the road and be telling traders, so, the road and be telling traders, so telling people who are going to the, to the, to the town that business, the millions to pay their tax. And the stats are saying, how much does it take them? How many, the strength to pay a mega amount from your, your income is a problem in Nigeria. So whether the, the, the reform, they do debate, they do public hearing from now to December, it will not solve the problem because it has really been very little Nigerian block that pay tax and the state government should do it in this country. They will tell you that the host tax, people will tell you the educational sector is dancing back to start. Look at the primary school level, they say they will not pay any, any safety from primary level to six. I saw some two-day basis home because they have not paid 2,000 naira, they say that they, you see, government are saying their own, government is not money trading, everything. So this is the problem. I would have wanted the federal government, the National Assembly, to put the next for best. We talk about this bill, this bill, tax is very, very important. Without tax, you cannot get money to do all these things of the talking. Look at the facilities you're talking about, every day they say, where is the money? Every day we continue, honestly, the state government to stop, even state government as a matter of, from borrowing money from anywhere. They should look inwards to get the revenue to solve the problem. The more we continue borrowing, the more we will get our students, students, people forced to relate to the 20 generation. So that is why the tax is very, very important, that everybody, Tom, Dick and Harry must pay tax, but the public should do the nature, let everything work where now or never. They know to do that, Nigeria says. It's not religious leaders, the national leaders, for a public opinion leaders, they declare Nigerians on importance of tax. Nigerians have not known the importance of tax. That is why you see this debate, 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 public hearing, hearing, what are you hearing? I would expect, I probably within National Assembly that to pick up, at the end of this year.
Mazi, Mazi Okorafo, you can also contribute.
Okay. Good morning, good morning. Good morning, Mazi Okorafo.
Mazi Okorafo, you are hearing me, you can send 60 hard copies. I know you have the money, Mazi, because I always hear you call all the time and you don't fear your credit. So you can actually send your own impute in 60 hard copies and two soft copies to the Senate Committee on Finance.
Okay, that's the way, that's the way it works.
Yes, the way it works. And you have between now and Friday. So Mazi, you have tomorrow, you have Thursday, you have Friday, once they receive it, your impute will also be, will also be analyzed because you see, the second reading took place on the 28th of November, 2024. So the third reading is what is, is the aggregate of all what has happened at this public opinion. Yes, what is what is going to go into the third reading. So when you look at what happened in the second reading and third reading, that will tell you if the views of people like Mazi Okorafo, if he submits it, was taken into consideration. You see, when the Senate says they're not in a hurry, because they want to take it clause by clause by clause.
They want, they intend to be thorough.
The Senate president wants to be very thorough on this tax bill. He doesn't want to get it wrong because he has seen that this is a future. You know, the Senate president saw where the ways and means situation was coming from, where almost 40 trillion was printed and were using to pay, we're living on borrowed time. And so by the time we have reduced that from 97% to about 65%, nobody wants, everybody believes it should go to 20, 25%. Don't forget that we have rebased our, our, our ratings now and even rebasing the inflation rate is still 24%. The president desires 15%. How do you achieve 15% if you don't have the income? The only way you can achieve 15% of inflation reduction from what we have now, even with the rebasing, is to raise more money. Without more money, the president cannot achieve, achieve that.
Maybe, maybe that's another conversation, but there are those who see the debasing as little more than a PR exercise.
No, it's not PR, because we, for a long time, we have not rebased our statistics.
Yes, but it hasn't affected value in any way.
It hasn't, yes, I agree, I agree with you. That's why I keep saying that people watching us will say, all this plain English, Ken is speaking, I don't understand, you get. But eventually, by the time they start seeing the reduction, people are still being, are being mischievous because with the dollar now hovering within 1.5 for a very long time, prices of things are supposed to come down. Some will tell you that the dollar, they're pricing it because the dollar has increased, but the dollar has stabilized.
It has.
I understand. And the more it stabilizes, the more the prices of goods and services come because why is our economic dollar rise? Because we only sell crude and the crude is not sold in Naira. Crude is sold in dollar.
Mr. George, thank you for holding on. Good morning to you, sir.
Good morning, Uncle Yuri, and good morning to Mr. Kolubu.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Kolubu, thank you for at least enlightening the public on this subject since the president meant they are good use to talk. Uncle Yuri, what I expected to see with the kind of controversy that was generated by this bill was a live transmission of the public hearing.
That's true.
So that people can know and hear what Nigerians feel about it when it is being debated or when it is being discussed at the National Assembly. That has not happened and I don't know why the presidency, the men, I mean, the, the presidentsmen have not deemed it necessary to, to do that. I don't know. Mr. Ken, since you are trying to help us, please, I want you to tell us this. In this bill, is there any provision for middlemen such as consultants who will collect us of the tax on behalf of government? Because it is, it is from some places problems usually come.
I agree.
That makes people to run away from payment of tax and then who are in the tax net now that were not there before. Nigerians need to have an idea about these things. Can you please quickly let us know if you, if you have this information? Thank you.
Okay, well, that is what the Joint Revenue Service Bill is aiming to achieve. You know, there are four bills, like I said, there's a tax bill, there's a tax administrative bill, there's a joint revenue service bill and there's a joint revenue board establishment bill. You see, that is what it aims to eliminate, Dominic, these consultants, because that is where leakages have come from and that is where they have seen that a lot of these leakages.
George, not Dominic.
Sorry, George, I thought you said Dominic.
No.
Did you say Dominic today?
No.
I don't know why I got Dominic from George. Sorry, Mr. George. So these, these are leakages that this tax will aim to plug. And you see, it was crafted in such a way, I must give credit to Mr. Yedele, the president and commander on physical and tax matters. He did a very good job. You see, I took my time to read that bill and I took my time to discuss it with my principal, the Senate president. If the joint revenue establishment board comes in, there might, there will not be any, any need for tax consultant because there will be synergy between the states and the, and the federal and the bills that we collected will be in a common purse and it will be shared and it will be paid into one account, just like we have the FAC. Are you understanding? And those leakages that you know come from states, those leakages that come from where federal governments will want you to pay tax, the state government wants you to pay the same tax, all those things will be eliminated, George. And those that are captured are basically those in the higher level. That's why I said earlier that if you are any 50 million and above, you are exempted from paying tax in terms of, and under, sorry, you know, in terms of small and medium scale industries. Then if you have any minimum wage, you are not expected to pay tax at this point because that is 1 million Naira bracket and under because 70,000 Naira is not up to 1 million in a year. So, and I don't see why somebody who is any 1 million Naira should pay tax at this material point in time, taking into consideration what the economy indices is talking about.
Well, indeed, I'm, I'm sure, well, Mr. George has long gone, but he, he's heard this and as he said, actually what you've come along to do is, you know, admirable to sort of better express this and explain it. Now I got a couple of moments left and so let me go to Senator Natasha.
You are so eager to discuss this issue of Senator Natasha.
Is she, is she, is she not a distinguished senator?
Oh, she is, she's a distinguished senator.
And she, she, she is angry.
You know, the, the fact, the fact is that people just want to discuss this issue from different perspectives.
They messed with her, you know, and she was, and she was holding the Senate president responsible directly. Say it's not today, it's not today you've been doing it.
But this, in the Senate, we have had controversies, we have had issues. I wonder why this one of Senator Natasha's quote is being blown overboard.
No, I don't know.
You know, you know, it's been blown overboard. Because in this time of social media, different accounts are giving. I was watching on YouTube, let's also give it to the Senate. In this tent Senate, there is no sitting you don't see on YouTube. Why was it captured immediately? It was captured immediately because once the sitting is going on, the YouTube channels come live and you can exactly watch what the senators are doing. The only time they can't see what the senators are doing is when they go into an executive session.
Yes, yes.
And when it goes to executive session is when it becomes ultimately necessary. Even myself and others that work for the Senate president, we don't know what happens in an executive session. It is strictly for the senators to know what would have happened. And so that did not happen in an executive session. It happened openly and people were seeing it on YouTube. What the senator was complaining about was that her seat had been, she had, her seat had been relocated and she felt, oh, she would have been informed prior to when her seat was relocated and she was not informed and she was not going to move to that seat. And the Senate president was only enforcing the rules.
So it's, is the matter being resolved?
Oh, it's, it's going to be resolved.
So enough said on the matter.
Thank you very much for understanding.
That's good enough for me.
Yes.
Enough has been said.
I knew you wanted to talk about this matter and so I had to assure you that it will be resolved.
And nobody was victimizing anybody.
Certainly, no, nobody was victimizing anybody, nobody was suppressing. In fact, on that day, Senator Natasha's bill passed first reading.
Okay, we got to leave it there. Thank you very much, Ken.
Thank you.
Sir Ken Okolubu, consultant, you know, consultant.
Communication and strategy.
Communication and strategy to the Senate president of the Federal Republic.
Thank you for having me.
Our pleasure as always. So we're going to have to leave it there. Thank you for being with us this morning. Do join us tomorrow for a fresh edition. I am Yori Volare. Bye-bye for now.